Hi, yeah, I'd like to bring the meeting to order if I could at 7:08. Did you want to just give a little a background on the webinar? How how it's used, Mariah? So. You know what I mean? The that this is because of Governor Baker and all has allowed this that that little introduction?
I don't I don't have that in front of me.
Do you want me to do it real quick?
Yeah, thanks, Brian.
Yep. All participants are informed that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live in accordance with Massachusetts general law. All questions submitted and participation becomes part of the permanent record and is taken at the discretion of the board chair.
Thanks, Brian. I guess I'd like to start, if possible, with the meeting minutes that Deb did for last meeting. I just they look very detailed, Deb. Just look them through. So if we could bring those up. I don't has anybody else had a chance to look through these? We we covered quite a lot of topics, so. I'll go through them very quickly. On a motion by Mike and seconded by Janice, minutes of 1016 were unanimously approved as amended. An emotion made by Mike and seconded by Janice, a minutes from 1118, 2021, were unanimously approved as amended. Asked he to include a copy of the 1128 182021 public hearing memo with the minutes. So that was the Mariah had rewritten the or I had done a draft and Mariah had updated the public hearing memo from 1118 and and rather than try to put all that detail into the minutes, we were going to attach them to the minutes. Son, he, if that's okay, so. Moonlight resigned last time and there was one invoice for the recorder. Two, actually, that I think I gave I gave to Brian and then a new one came in since the last meeting and I've given that to Betsy to process. New. I'm sorry. Can't quite read that. New here. What was it new? Shirley Bond? Oh, yeah, a new bond document, security. I think that words, security. Bond, is that right, Ryan? Came in for the Boyd and solar was received. That was like.
The charity bond.
Yes.
On the properties.
Yeah. And there was a public retailer for cannabis and orange and gill. We opened the meeting at 7:15 for the public hearing that the select board had submitted a chick for us to consider changing the word family to unit for in the single two and model family dwellings. Men the definition of multiple family dwelling from a dwelling containing three or more, but not more than four dwellings separated by vertical horizontal walls designed for occupancy by not more than four families to Molly unit dwelling, a dwelling containing three or more units separated by vertical walls. Then the use table allow two unit dwellings by right and central village and village residential instead of special permit amend the use table while Molly unit dwellings by special permit in all zoning areas. So Mark Burnett was he was there because they had an A and R and he had some questions and wondered why the cap of four units was removed. Brian responded that they're working on redevelopment of the IP mill and Union 28 building. Specifically affordable housing. This developer could seek a 40B process from the state so they could conduct a project in there. Mark asked, could Brian please explain the state requirement 10% affordable housing? Response, Brian, the state has a requirement communities maintain affordable housing. Affordability is based on income in the area. So to specific, Irving is far below 1%. If the community fails below 10% and doesn't have a housing production plan in place, then a developer had the opportunity to seek relief from a zoning by law in a way of 40B process. Then George Moonlight Davis asked, one area that that are considering doing the Molly family unit is renovator supply. Is this correct response? Deb, no renovators is a privately owned site and the planning board has no knowledge of any plans for that location. I said, wouldn't this open them up to put a Molly unit dwelling? Response, Brian, currently Molly unit dwellings are allowed in Central Village by special permit. So that that's still right now, it's a maximum of four units. Couldn't a developer come into town and take a town owned property? The town could need to sell them. Is that correct? Yeah, so the two, the town owned properties, the town has control over. Are we being motivated to put housing anywhere to follow state guidelines? Are we looking just to do it or is watching, well, looking at how we can do it wisely for everybody? And response, Brian Irving is so far below the 10% housing guideline. A developer could seek relief from 40B. No, nothing is being done to simply put make meet a goal. Irving is a committee has made specific decisions to limit the amount of growth that can happen. The town is trying to retain local control. I want to make sure we can implement the restrictions as we deem necessary. I might express concern that when the planning board voted on changing Molly unit to special permit in all zones, there was a cap before. Anywhere that a 50 development moonlight goes will create a busy area and need for additional services such as police. This will be something the town will have to think about. Mike Schaefer, this would be taken into consideration during the special permit process. Mike also expressed he would like to see more detail as to the number of the size and size of the units. Mark brought up, are these going to be at the annual town meeting or special town meeting? He feels strongly that it be at an annual town meeting. How many other municipalities have gone this route that fell fell? Felt they have to meet requirements set forth by the state is Irving leading and trailing these policies. Brian currently being considered for a special town meeting. Look back at the last 15 years, America majority of zoning changes have all been done. At special town meeting, Irving is trailing behind on all issues. Many other communities have housing production plans in place have been working on this for years. Moonlight in general, we have been one of the one for integration and change in the town to have a wide variety of residents. Should we not really look at the place? We could zero in and spot pick out to get give a developer so we can control where they build the project. Ryan stirring the 50 unit conservation conversation is the boss working on the IP. No, he had no knowledge of any other projects in any other area town. He explained that even if this you change one aspect of zoning, for example, changing the cap from 40 to 20 central village, all the other zoning requirements or restrictions for central village zone would still apply. This would mean not all processes in the zone could be able to Molly unit development. That that's like parking requirements, right, Brian? Things like that, I believe. And how much of a lot can be taken up by a building? On a motion by Mike and seconded by Deb, the planning board voted unanimously to close the public hearing at 7:45. Mike made a motion to move to the French King Solar Gate. Move topic best we would be coming back to the board of select board hearing discussion topic. She noted the planning board had not discussed it and had not made a decision on the recommendations of the boss of the next step. Mike stated that he would like to see more information on caps for different zoning districts. In his opinion, would need to have a public sewer and water using the special permit process to review any potential plans. Could put a fair burden on the planning board. He would suggest potentially having a gradual caps across the zoning districts such as 50 and central values, something in French King, something in village residential and and gradually reducing to three or four and rural residential. Janice questions if we should look at property size determined unit amounts, something along lines of one acre lot could have up to 20 units. She spoke about being Texas and how seeing buildings just seem to be put up anywhere. And we live in a country and it and like it that way. We want to be mindful. I lost my, I'm sorry. We want to be mindful of development happen. She would like a bit more time to look into before making a decision. We don't want to set a cap too low and lose out on a good project, but also want to make sure we're making the best decision for the town. Deb expressed she agrees with Mike and Janice and wants mindful of how development happens. She finds Mike's idea gradual cap interesting. She feels that some zoning areas are better than others for multiple unit dwellings. For example, she would want to see large projects in rural residential, but could see it could fit into CV zone, wants to make sure the special permit process strong enough to cover all aspects we would want in reviewing large project. Brian asked for clarification. The planning board is potentially open to the definition change, but potentially not open to the use table. Mike, yes, we will continue research and wait until our next meeting to decide on a formal recommendation. So that was a lot. Thanks, Deb. You did a good job capturing all that. Okay, French King Solar Gate request. Any any corrections there that anybody? See.
Deb, I just have one correction on someone's name at the very top. I think um I think John Manchini, you accidentally just hit C again.
Okay, I've been looking at that all day, wondering if I did that.
Okay. French King Solar Gate change request. Rob and Steve represented the gate change request for the French King solar project ever source has requested a gate change to have fully unobstructed access to their equipment. Steve showed us on the plans where the gate was proposed and location they are asking it to move to French King continued 300 East from previous proposed. Brian confirmed that the gate wouldn't have a lock box. I think it is not a Knox box. Right?
It's not.
Oh, it is lock Knox box.
K N O.
Huh?
Yep.
K A K N O X Knox.
Correct.
Huh? Key to Irving on its emergency per on a motion made by Mike and seconded by Janice, the planning board voted unanimously to approve the gate change. And Brian or Mariah will draft a memo noting approval and provide to Steve. I don't know if that's happened yet, but.
I need to send that over to you.
Mark explained that currently his own, he only has right away for his driveway and the A and R will formally make the driveway part of his property. On a motion by Mike and seconded by Deb, the planning board voted unanimously to approve the A and R for 2512 Road. And draft public hearing memo. The board reviewed the draft hearing report from our November 18th, 2021 public hearing. Deb asked at the last paragraph stating that Mike Schaefer expressed be removed as the conversation did not take place during the public hearing. Mike asked that it be noted that he and Peggy Sloan from Furco both stated a pod should have public sewer and water. He expressed concern that this has not been captured anywhere. It was pointed out that Mike had previously sent his concern to the boss on a motion made by Mike and seconded by Janice. So planning board voted unanimously approve the draft public hearing report memo is amended, removing the last paragraph. Okay, anymore? Is that it? Okay, the budget gave an overview of the planning board, but he let Janice know there are classes seminars. She could take if interested and expenses would be covered by the budget. I guessed what line item our postcard mailing and advertising came out of. Ryan said it was the expense line. I Mike question if the board needs to set up clerical help, especially with the consultant coming on board. He stated would be helpful to have someone scanning and emailing the planning board mail to him. This way would not have to go to town hall to pick up. It could have been attached to our minutes electronically. Brian explained that this expense would have to come from our budget and that finding someone to fill a one to two hour weekly position would be difficult. Mike would like to explore hiring someone to take the minutes for the planning board. He feels the minutes are one of the most important documents generated in a meeting. Minutes are the task. Minutes are the task the board is going to work on and do which and who will do which task. He expressed concern about minutes taking and distributed in an acceptable and timely fashion as he does not feel the planning board does this. He is satisfied with how the minutes are taken and distributed. Explain that his opinion, the minutes and minutes include the ward's action items. And that if we don't have that list coming out for months after a meeting, you're doomed to get things done waiting two months for minutes. Action items list to see who was supposed to do something two months ago is not acceptable. Okay, and then Deb stated that no other committees have that level of clerical support and the duties and responsibilities come with being a board member. Mail, for example, is a responsibility chair. When it comes to minutes, Deb stated that in her opinion, Mike did not give Sun He guidance on his expectations to the concerns and expectations with her. This was Sun He will have a clear idea of Mike's expectation. She can deliver. Tonight was the first time Mike discussed the creation of action item list with the board. This list is not the same as minutes and would, while it could can be included in the minutes is different and separated from the minutes taking. If Mike wants a specific list created, then he needs to let Sun He know expenses expects this and it falls under her responsibility. And her opinion, Deb doesn't feel the finance committee would support a clerical position for just one board. The planning board is a stipend board and that comes with duties and responsibilities and members are expected to do. So we take I I took that off the table after that. Brian explained the town is filing A and R for Pleasant Street layout. There's no land taking to looking at the layout from eight 19 August, 1903. The entire road was known as Pleasant Streets. Somehow during the last hundred years, an error is made and the small section was incorrectly labeled Maple Street. This A and R would incorporate Maple Street into Pleasant Street as a select board of 1903 intended. There's no address on this road and it will not affect 911. A motion was made by Mike and seconded by Janice to unanimously approve the A and R for Pleasant Street. We passed over ADU's review and revisions. Other business not oh, Brian should receive paperwork. Sometime this week, hopefully, once received, we'll execute and send back. Once this sign is sent back, we can proceed with finding as consultants. So we it was was it a $60,000 grant, Mariah? You got, I think, for that. That's so. So hopefully, we can get a consultant to help go through all our planning stuff. Other business not anticipated. Deb pointed out at the budget hearing that the planning board needs to link their part of the codification project. Could this please be included on the January agenda? Mike, yes, it will be. Other business not anticipated. Deb asked Mike if he has concerns or problems with how people are working on the board that he addresses them with a board so they can be resolved, not left left to fester. She felt that it was unfair to Sun He that was in present during a discussion that focused on her work on the board in the approximately eight months she has been taking our minutes. No concerns have been addressed with the board so far. To hear them tonight was surprising. And I respond that this is why you requested more help. Deb explained that she understands this, however, as board members, we have responsibility comes with serving. And we can't just hire someone to do them and that no other boards has that level of support. We are not willing to take these on. Maybe we need to rethink why we're here. Mike stated he feels he's doing more than our previous chair that meetings were not held for a year prior to in becoming chair and he has held one every month. This is hard to have an effective meeting when you don't have action items, minutes. Sun He is aware and he isn't happy and he wants the minutes on a week after the meeting. And that he stayed that many times and that it hasn't happened. Deb expressed that having taken minutes for six years, accepting them out of in a week is unrealistic and is holding us to a standard that's set by a prior generation of planning board and that it's unfair. Mike stated that maybe it was. I've taken the site plans off the board and the special permit off the board. We got too much on our table right now. A motion was made by Mike and seconded by Janice. Planning voted unanimously to adjourn at 9:20. Next meetings will be held on January 20th at 7:00 PM. Thank you, Deb. I I I make a motion to accept the minutes as amended. Oh, okay. Can't hear you.
Sorry, I was muted and lost my cursor. I caught a mistake. It was actually Dick Newton that pointed out that the codification needed to be worked on, not me.
Okay.
Okay, now you can make your motion. Sorry.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
As amended, okay. And I'll second.
Hey, please do a roll call, all in favor.
All in favor?
No, well, no, I mean.
Say your name, right? So it'd be like sunny eye.
Like shitty for I is unanimously approved. Okay, thank you. That was a very detailed minutes. Okay, the new mail, there hasn't wasn't too much there. One thing, Brian, maybe you could help me. I got a thing from Furco that said that Irving had requested to take over Poplar Mountain develop road development from them. I didn't quite follow that. Do you know what I'm talking about, Brian? Mariah? I don't know. It's a there was a Zoom me an MGL meeting on January 13th. The public convenience and necessity to require the discontinuance of all existing Franklin County layouts along Poplar Mountain Road in the town of Irving, such that upon discontinuance as a county road, it shall become a town road in accordance with the provisions of MGL, chapter eight, 2082, section five. Any any updates? I don't. Mariah, do you know? I don't know anything about it.
I I don't know what the question is.
I don't understand what it's it had. It was from Franklin County to the town of Irving about Poplar Mountain. It was a
So yeah, are you asking what that process is?
Yeah, I don't. Yeah, what what is that? What is a process? What's it about?
So right now, Poplar Mountain Road is is a county road. The layout is run by the county and the town is taking it from them to have it be a town road.
And did that go through? Do you know if that's is that all done now?
I believe so.
But that's correct. They had their public hearing last week and they voted to support the town's application. So we are working with a surveyor. As soon as the surveyor is done with the layout, the select board will send it to the planning board for an A and R. Once that's done, the select board will hold the public hearing on it. And assuming there's no concerns, we'll order the layout and take it to town meeting.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Of course.
And we had a few CBAs from Gil about a wireless communication. I guess they put in North Mount North, Northfield, Mount Herman. They've put they set up a wireless communication building. And they had a nonconforming lot for a resident in Montague. So that's really all I I've got for new mail. We did get a letter of interest from Melanie Burnett to that Brian Brian received from her. So I don't know if I've got that on the agenda or not. I don't think I do. Um, okay. So the the next item was status of A and R's town of Irving and Swamp Road. So I know the Swamp Road for the Burnett's got approved and it Jackie delivered it to him. Mark, so that one's done. Brian, I how are you doing with the A and Rs? Are you okay with the town A and Rs? Or is there still things that we need to prove?
So you had approved the form road layouts that we've taken to to you all this year. There was a slight mistake when the town clerk was signing them in, and I think he he put the wrong date on there. So he was going to ask if you wouldn't mind just re-signing the Mylar with the the date you already approved it. You've already there are no changes, but it's just to to correct that one clerical mistake. So those are finally in town hall and I can put those out for your signature the next time you all come through. The only one that I haven't brought to you yet is the one for Poplar Mountain, and that's because we're still in the drafting stage. But otherwise, yes, you've taken care of all of them for us.
So will they? Well, why don't you send an email out when they're ready to be signed?
Of course.
All right.
Of course. And I'll even if it's helpful, I'll put the new Mylar with the one you signed before. So you'll see exactly that it's nothing's different.
Right, right. And good, thank you.
Yep.
The next thing, Ryan, I I wondered maybe you could lead lead us on review, public hearing, zoning change and table and definition, multiple unit, maximum four to no max allowed by special permit to zones, central village and village residential by select boards.
I'll even jump on cameras. A mysterious voice. So the select board considered the feedback that they received from your December 16th public hearing and participation from the public at a subsequent select board meeting. I believe that was January 3rd. And so they prepared this memorandum for you all. They they are changing their request after that feedback. They still believe that the definition request. They still believe that the definition request that they asked for in terms of the removal of a cap on the multi-unit and the change from family to unit is still, still necessary. So they would like to maintain that request. But they are reducing the request to have it allowed by special permit in all zones. And instead, they're just asking that the planning board hold a public hearing to consider adding it to VR. It's already in CV. So it would just be adding it to the VR section.
Any other discussion? Deb, were you able to look at other towns, what they, they did, or?
No, I looked at, I interviewed the documents that Brian sent. I didn't have the opportunity to look at other towns. I know this new memo that they sent personally I'm comfortable with.
I, I had a chance to look at one town that I thought had a, a good solution and
Shelburne, I think you said?
Yeah, I don't know if, is this it? I don't think, yeah. And what they had at, it would be 2.15. It wouldn't be multiple family. It would be multiple units. A principal building designed for or converted for occupancy by up to four families living in, I guess you wouldn't say families for, in separate dwelling units separated by vertical walls or horizontal walls. This is what I liked, though. It said historic industrial or commercial structures converted from multiple family residence use may have more than nine dwelling units. I don't know why they have put nine in there. So what they're saying is new construction would be limited to four units. But if you were taking a factory or a school, you could have as many units in there as would be practical. Right? That's what I, I, I don't know. Any discussion on that? What I, it would, it would meet your requirements. Really, you're, the, the select board, I believe, they, they want to convert the, the old school and the IP mill into, you know, housing units. And those would both, I would think, would fall if we put it into, use something. Historic was before 1950, I think, was their definition of historic. How old is the school building there, Brian? Is that?
Twenty-four.
Yeah.
The, I, I can't speak for the select board. I, I, I think that that may address some of what I heard them talk about, but I would have to bring that recommendation back to them to, to see if they concur.
I'm trying now. Go ahead, Deb, sorry.
I was gonna say, I like this idea. I like the idea of reuse. My only concern with this, A, what happens if you want five, six, seven, or eight apartments? I don't see any where they cover those numbers. Um, but I think of things like senior housing, that more than likely would be brand-new development.
True.
And are we eliminating that perspective type of development by implementing something like this?
Well, what I, you could write in, well, that a planned unit development would be excluded from it too, if that's gonna be, that's, I thought about that, and that would be my answer to that. You know, we could include planned unit developments in this. Good point. Other thing that I'm concerned about is not including the French King in it.
Well, and a, and a PUD isn't always, isn't always strictly residential. So I don't know if having it written like that would make sense.
If I can offer, I think that you could, you could say something like that, and you would phrase it in a way that, you know, if the residential development is part of the PUD, then it would be exempt from this, you know? Not, not that all PUDs would be subject to the residential restriction, but almost the opposite of, of if the dwelling units are in the PUD, then you can have more than four units or something like that.
Right. That's kind of, I mean, that's the kind of the wording I would, I would think would be good if, you know, I thought of that, Deb, and that was, you know, one of my concerns about the elderly housing. And then, like I said, the other thing, I would, I don't see why we're not including the French King commercial in that too, because it is commercial compared to Village Residential.
Well, and I would just throw this out here. What happens if our PUD doesn't go through? You know, if the residents don't support the PUD, then we're kind of back at square one.
Well, I would put the PUD through quick, you know, I, I don't, you know, like the order that you do things in was important. So the PUD, we should get that approved as quickly as we can. Senior housing isn't even on the table right now.
No, it's not. But I just don't know if I like the idea of tying multi-unit development to a district that has not been formally created. I just, I don't know.
This would go at the same time as a PUD, right? I mean, this would be one of the things we're gonna bring to special meeting. So you'd have to, if the PUD doesn't get created, I see what you're saying. This, you couldn't include it in it afterwards.
Right. I guess for me, I would rather see us address the use table and the definition. I like where Shelburne is going with the idea of kind of requiring reuse. I don't necessarily know if I feel it fits as well in Irving. I mean, I can only really think of three, maybe four spots that that would be, you know, a property would be able to be reused. But I think we have plenty of land where if someone wanted to work with the town in a, in a development setting, something new could be built. Requiring reuse, my other concern with that is the cost. I mean, the, the cost can be so exorbitantly expensive. The library to reuse, the Union 28 Building, I think, was a 10 or 11 million dollar project. And that was literally gutting the entire thing and just leaving the shell and building up from there. So that isn't, I would be fearful in that regard that someone would come in and look at a property we want to have reused and just say, you know what, that building needs so much work to bring it even up to code. It's just not a cost, a product we can afford to, to take on. And so then we're just gonna get stuck having this big mill or whatever it is, sitting there again, not being used, because it's too cost prohibitive.
I, I have seen a lot of other mills in this Route 2 corridor up and down, like the old factories and things like that, that have been reused. We, what, whatnot. I don't know if there are, I don't know what's out there for like special construction, special grants or something like that, that could help with those kinds of costs. But I don't know if, or, you know, private companies are, had the money to do it or whatnot. But there, you know, people have reused buildings, definitely, right? So, and we have seen that, and then they've turned them into office buildings or, or office spaces or dwellings or, you know, art spaces, let's say Mass Mocha, for example, in North Adams and the Berkshires. Those, those all have been paper factories, textile factories, and they're reused, you know? Yeah, so it's either reuse or demolish and then, you know, use the pad, the footpad, right? Is that how it goes in this town? Yeah, okay. Yeah, so I don't know if they're like grants to, you know, help gut old, you know, buildings or companies or, you know, just buildings, I suppose, out there in Massachusetts or federally or anything like that. That's just a thought.
Just, if, if you would like, in general, I, I think the mix, there's a variety of factors for how that mix works, Son Hee. I think you're absolutely right. The, the potential exists. And it really is finding the right developer with the right financial portfolio and opportunities, clients that they're working with. And then it really comes down to the site location and the, the ability of the town, whether it's through the zoning bylaws or the development package that the, the town's willing to work with a potential developer. It, it's a multitude of factors. And so, you know, what you all are describing right here and discussing is just one piece of that, that overall puzzle. You, you're trying to put together as many tools in the toolbox that allows the community to achieve what it's trying to achieve. And hopefully, that, that array of options is attractive enough to a potential developer where they're willing to take that financial risk. You're absolutely right. It, it could be a commercial space. It could be artist studios. It could be housing units. Who knows? And, and we've definitely seen examples of success. The, the concern, though, is if you allow, if, if you don't create some opportunity for these non, these facilities that don't comply with our laws, they will sit, they will rot. And at some point, they do become a, a greater liability on the community. So we, we risk not timing these opportunities correctly. And I think you're in a, in a point where right now, we have a lot of expressed interest. Who knows who the, the successful project proposer will be? But right now, you have a lot of people expressing interest in these facilities. So this could be a good opportunity for you all to achieve some goals. So.
Janice, what are your thoughts? Are you?
I think it like, should we just be, put a big old for lease sign up? I know. I'm just like listening to everything you guys are saying, and gals. And I'm a little floored right now, like, you know, oh my gosh, there's a lot to think about, like Deb was saying, you know, and Mike about the housing for the elderly. And then, God, I don't know. It's a tough call, because, you know, I want to get old and maybe go into that new development, but, you know.
Well, I'm going there next week, so.
We want you all to be able to stay here in Irving until the day you no longer want to be here. So if that means decades, we want to make sure we have housing for you all.
Okay, Brian, thank you.
I, I guess I'm concerned about taking the maximum with no maximum listed without doing something like what I, you know, if we can phrase it so that we can make, make it so that these two buildings can be utilized soon, that would be good. And then maybe later, we can rewrite the, rewrite it to address the, the senior housing. But I don't know how to put, I don't know how to do it without, I don't know what maximum number we should put on there right now. That's my problem. We've, we've heard about 50 at the IP mill and maybe 10 at the, the, the school.
Um, I, I learned something the other day that might be helpful in this conversation. I, I went to a webinar on 40B, and I believe Deb did as well, as well as one of our select board members. And after that, I was doing some research on how 40B works, how comprehensive permitting, you know, what, how does it actually function and what are the logistics of it? And one of the things that I learned, so I, I guess I don't know if everyone knows what 40B is, but I'll explain just in case. So Chapter 40B allows comprehensive permitting, which is permitting for development projects that are for affordable housing, which exceed zoning requirements. So for example, our current zoning allows up to four units. So if someone came in with an affordable housing development proposal for eight units, they would be doing that through a comprehensive permit under Chapter 40B. And basically, they're, they're appealing our zoning standards and saying that it's for the greater good of having affordable housing in that community. And there are several things that a town can do if that happens, and they feel that that project is not a good fit. If they feel it's a good fit, they can say, great, we'll work with you to make this comprehensive permit happen. You know, you're good to go. That's called a friendly 40B. If people in town feel like that is not a good fit, or there's adjustments that need to be made, they can work on those adjustments with the developer potentially. If they want to try to outright not have that development, there are parameters on that. And that's when Brian talks about 10% subsidized housing. If you have that 10%, that allows you to say, actually, we've met this threshold. We, we are going to stand by our zoning requirements. So that's one way. A housing production plan, putting that in place is another way. But the thing that I learned that I think is more, most pertinent to this is that a zoning board of appeals can say, can, can, I believe lawfully reject a comprehensive permit application if the proposed housing units are more than 6% of the current units in town. So for example, say Irving has 700 housing units, and a proposer comes in and says, I'm gonna build 700 housing units. You know, and that's 100% of our current housing stock. The zoning board of appeals could say no to that. So my understanding is that I think sick, I think I calculated it, and 6% of our current number of housing units was about 40 units. So if someone, if a developer came in and tried to file a comprehensive permit under Chapter 40B, the zoning board of appeals could make them limit it to 40 units, is my understanding. So that might provide some context to this conversation. I, I think that your discussion about having an upward limit on the number of dwellings is a totally valid conversation. Because it will apply to more than just 40B. But that might give you an idea when we're talking about the specific properties that we're expecting a 40B to potentially happen. But those are some of the parameters that they have.
Do you know, like Jackie said, Sunderland, that was a 40B project down there. They put in 150 units. Are you guys familiar with that? Anybody?
Yeah, kind of. Part of it. I know it was a very contentious. And it went all the way to, I believe it's the State Supreme Court, and the developer won, because the town did not want it.
Yesterday, I drove by, and I, it didn't look very good to me. I mean, it, it's, it's six, five or six big buildings, Barrack style, three floors with probably 30 units in a, a building. And I don't know, it, it wouldn't, I don't, I didn't think it looked that great, to be truthful, but that's my opinion.
Well, I think that just goes back to the bylaw that you're crafting is trying to give, again, the, the, the tools to you all to try to control the type of development you want to see. I mean, we can't control every aspect, but the things that are really important to you all to keep the character and the, 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 the values of the community, you know, intact. So, you know, I, I think we bring this to you, this request, the select boards bring this request to you, yes, because we have projects that we're trying to see to fruition. But, but hoping that as you go through this process, we're creating tools for you all to keep what's important to Irving viable, you know? Nobody's trying to cram a, a, a project through that doesn't reflect the character of the, of the needs of the community.
So can I simplify, Mariah, Chapter 40B as comprehensive permit for affordable housing?
Yes, that's, that's what it's for.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, I'll just say, I'm not in favor of a cap. I have given it a lot of thought. And I think at some point I think Scott made an interesting point at the select board meeting that if we cap it and a developer came forward, and let's say we capped those residential at 10, and a developer came forward with a plan with 15 units. But it had everything we ever could have wanted. We now, in theory, can't work with them unless they do a 40B process. So I think at some point, we have to say, we trust ourselves, elected officials. We trust the Board of Selectmen as elected officials. And we trust the process to make the best decisions that are in the best interest of our community. I mean, it's not, there is tons. I was actually really surprised when I went to the 40B seminar, when they first kind of just spoke about the review process and how long it could take. I was kind of like, oh, that doesn't really feel very long. And then he put the slide up on the screen and was like, it's the time to do this and this and this. And I was like, wow, that feels like a really, really long time. And all included in that are public hearings and, you know, all kinds of stuff. So there's plenty of opportunity for our community to have input and have say. And I just keep thinking back to, what if we cap something, we're coming up with, we're just pulling out an arbitrary number? And so what if that actually that cap ends up being detrimental? And we miss out on really amazing projects because we came up with some arbitrary, what's the difference from 10 to 12? Are we going to go with odd numbers or even numbers? Like, I I just, it it feels like we're kind of pulling it out of a hat. And in all reality, if a developer came into 40B, they can pretty much build whatever, you know, in within reason, a number of units right now, because we have zero affordable housing. So a cap's not going to matter in that instance.
I got two questions. One is if if we do set a cap at 10, and someone comes in and wants 15, they could go, I believe, through the ZBA and get a variance. Am I wrong there? I don't know.
The 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 ZBA variance process looks at, I believe, it's five specific statutory characteristics, and it has to do with aspects of the land that they can't, there's some reason about the property that they can't comply with your zoning. So something beyond the applicant's control. So I don't think that housing unit numbers would be grounds for variance.
Okay.
The chapter 40B process is is basically a variance, if you think of it that way. It's just a very complicated variant.
And it's, that's overseen by DHCD on the state level.
And that would, like Mariah said, roughly 40 unit maximum for 6% of our 700 homes. So there is a limit there. Yeah, I'm still not comfortable without a limit for new construction. I I would accept this one that I I said, where you take an existing structure and convert it, take the limit off. I don't know if you want us to take a vote, Brian. I
No, I think I think what Jake was asking you all is either for feedback in or not Jake, but the select board was asking either for feedback from the planning board for the select board to consider further, or to schedule the public hearing. So that a potential zoning change could be presented to the residents at town meeting. So I don't know that you need to take any votes other than if you choose to.
But you don't, right now, the not all the planning board supports supports it the way it's written.
Right. So if there's feedback you'd like to send back to the select board, you, the board, you could choose to do that.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's what I'm saying, Deb, saying she doesn't want a max. I'm not happy without a max or using something like what I put in here.
Brian, because the select board has changed their request, are we obligated to hold a public hearing regardless? Because it considered a new request now that they changed it?
It is considered a new request. So we went back to counsel to to ask for clarification on the feedback process, the planning, the planning board's public hearing process, and whether a lesser request than the previous request triggers another public hearing. And her, her guidance on that matter is that it would be necessary to hold a separate public hearing, even if the change that the select board is now requesting is less than what they asked you before. So any change of substance requires that public hearing process. I guess what I think that is, you could schedule a public hearing based on what the request is. But if you all have, as a planning board, a different opinion on what you want to see there, scheduling public hearing after public hearing for the sake of a public hearing, if there's no agreement between the boards, may not be the most efficient use of all of our time. Or the public's, you know, at some point, the public's probably going to get a little tiresome of all of these public hearings. So we probably want to make sure that there's some general consensus before you schedule that public hearing. Would you like me to see if I can get a select board member to jump on to to talk to you all? Sure. Let me see if Jake's available. I think he's going to be joining us in just a minute.
Do you know if all those apartments are affordable housing for 40B, or is, or does just a certain percentage of it have to be Mariah or Deb?
It's
It's a percentage.
And that really, Mike, is dictated by many, many factors, but one driving factor is the financial mix that a developer is going to bring to the table. So if they're trying to do a project and it's necessary to have certain, a certain number of units at a particular subsidized rate, they're doing that because the guaranteed from the federal government in terms of the subsidies that they'll receive allows them to fund the project. So you you could have a mix of market, just above market, 80% AMI, 30% AMI. And that mix allows them to actually fund the project, whereas another developer may have a completely different financial capacity, and they could do all of full market rate. So it really depends on the the developer and and what their financial portfolio looks like. I'm not sure if he's been able to jump on yet. There we go. And I'll be right back. I just need to drag my dog into another room.
So, Mike, just to give you an idea, the one in Sunderland, I just looked up the article, 150 units and only 25% are deemed affordable. Everything else is market.
That's a pretty high percentage, though. Usually, it's like 10 or 20%.
I think if you have questions for the select board member, you should ask them.
Did you have specific questions for him, Mike, or I'm, I don't, I don't know if Sonny or Janice might?
No, I mean, I, my thing was, I won't want to set a maximum number of units unless we use existing buildings. To get this through quickly. So you can move on, bring it to a special hearing, public hearing, public.
I think Jake's just having a mic issue.
Can you hear me?
There we go.
Yeah. Got you now, Jake.
Okay, I said that a few times. I got no response. It must have been something on my end. Sorry about that. I I am here now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I think I was trying to respond back to the planning board's questions regarding the requests that the select board submitted. And I think they're trying to figure out how they are going to proceed. So if if there's maybe some feedback as a select board member about what you were looking for. Maybe that would help the the planning board move forward.
Sure, I'm not sure if there was anything in the memo that drove any questions that wasn't clear. You know, the board, there's a couple of projects specifically that we're working on, and one is the 18 Pleasant Street, former graded school. And the board in their RFP out to potential interested developers was you know, intentional in writing a grading rubric that focused on, you know, more advantageous to have housing. At the time, oversight on on our part in the office and ourselves to not realize it was in VR, which doesn't allow that type of development. So that was kind of the first driver for requesting a review of this and recommending, you know, to the the planning board, consider either changing the zoning originally was was one thought in that area, but maybe a better approach was to change to special permit. And to adjust the language and the definition for multi-unit and to make it, you know, greater than than four. Secondary to that, we're working on the former IP mill property, which obviously is much larger. And some of the proposals over the years and and studies we've done have indicated it may lend itself to mixed use, which would include residential and likely anything that did include residential in that site would be greater than four units. So, again, even though that is CV and does allow multi-unit by special permit currently, I believe, it would again be capped at four, and and that wouldn't be conducive to that size, you know, size location, if a developer was interested in putting in some mixed use that included housing. So those like words, you know, request was to consider potentially moving VR to the special permit, you know, after knowing the planning board stayed there. Or held over the request that we had last time, it was a little more broad and wanted to, you know, review it further before providing feedback. We kind of reconsidered as well and said, you know, there's, there's really a couple of specific areas that we're focused on. Some of the other areas that don't have it currently may or may not be conducive to changing the multi-unit development allowance to special permit. And so it's like, we didn't feel like they want to take a stance on that, but but instead narrow the scope, which was the point of this memo.
Thank you. Thank you, Jake. I I I can speak for myself, Jake. I don't, not as a board, but I've got two concerns. One is I think the French King commercial should be included in it, not excluded. And the the number of units per per building should be capped, or I I, Brian put up. If you could show Brian the other from Shelburne again, just so Jake is sees it, but one thing I found in Shelburne under 2.15 a multi-unit building, a principal building designed or converted for occupancy of up to four families, including living space separated vertical walls and horizontal, historic industrial or commercial structures, which for them is before 1950, converted for multiple family residential use, may have more than nine dwelling units. I don't know, but it could have any number of units. And also see parking requirements, but specifically for the two buildings that you're looking at, this would address it without putting an upper limit on which we were, like Deb said, we're guessing a a number, if we're trying to put 50 or 10 or 12. But this would, I'm not, I I I'm not happy without some kind of upper unit number on it without using an existing building.
I'm by far not a zoning expert, so this question for all of you, but if it's by special permit, doesn't that give the review process, the ability to restrict the number of units when they see the proposals, they feel it doesn't fit the area that that's being proposed? If there's good reason, obviously, you know, I I'm assuming it requires, you know, good reason and consistency, but if, is that accurate?
I think that's putting a lot of pressure on the planning board, because that's my opinion. It should, I think it should be. If it's in the the bylaw, then it it's easy to enforce, but it's going to be difficult. And it's going to be hard for the planning board. That's that's my issue.
I guess I don't, I don't follow the difficulty. There's a special permit process where they the, you know, present their proposal and and probably reasons why they want that unit count if it's, you know, larger. And I don't know how we would come up with an arbitrary limit today that says, we can imagine what a specific area can or cannot handle without seeing a plan and knowing the neighborhood and all of those factors that go into that.
Again, we have a now, somebody came up with that limit and I I personally, I, six would be okay, you know, a building with six units, I've seen that look nice. But bigger than that, I don't think fits into Irving.
So I think it's important to point out, and I don't, I know this got pointed out before, and I, my apologies if it was here. I've attended a couple of different meetings where this topic's been discussed. I think people have the misconception that if we change and we remove a cap, that suddenly every single property becomes available for this type of building. And that's not true, because it still has to fit all the other zoning requirements for that district. I'll be honest, I believe in a really open and you know, I I want residents to look at our meetings and and feel like we're doing things on the up and up. And accepting 2.15 so we can get these two projects through, so to speak, feels these two projects through, so to speak, feels sneaky to me. And it doesn't, it doesn't sit well with me to make this decision based on the potential for redevelopment at two sites and then to go back, knowing that we're going to go back and revisit it and change it. So I think if we are going to make a change, we should make a change that is suitable for the town as a whole, not specific to two sites right now. I mean, we have two sites that are being developed, you know, that there's interest in right now. As Brian said, we could get RFPs back and we could get none. You know, I hope that's not the case. I hope I didn't just put out some bad energy into the universe. But I think we have to look at it much more holistically than just two specific sites, because this change will affect the entire community.
It should go to special, it needs to go to town meeting if you want to do that. That's what Mark said. I mean, if you don't want to be sneaky about it, don't put it through at a special meeting.
So putting it through to special town meeting, in my opinion, is not sneaky. We send, we send postcards home notifying everyone that we are holding our public hearings. The special town meeting warrant goes to every home in our community. It's put on the Facebook page, it's put on the town website. They're posted at the library, they're posted at town hall. And for the last 15 years, as Brian pointed out, our zoning changes have been done at special town meetings. So that's not being sneaky and as a resident, it's my responsibility, if there's an issue that I care about and that I feel, you know, I have an opinion about, it's on me to get myself to that meeting, regardless of when it's held. So I, I said to Mark then, I disagree with that theory. I have witnessed many times where things have come to an annual town meeting and as soon as that specific interest group, the article is passed, they're up and out the door. I have seen where we have agonized over how to, how to organize the warrant. So certain things come in certain orders and I've watched, I'm not trying to call them out, but they're the group that did it, the school committee stand up and request that all the school meeting warrants be moved to the front of the agenda. And then again, they were voted on and there was mass exodus. I've watched our town clerk have to get up and count at an annual town meeting to make sure we still held quorum. So there's no guarantee people are going to show up at either. And so I honestly, Mike, I take a little offense to you calling it sneaky.
The only one who said that, Deb, I was at a, a select board meeting and Scott said that too, and Mark said it at the last public hearing meeting, so I'm, I'm just
I was there, I was, I've been at the board meetings because of my finance committee obligations. Scott also said that because after hearing that it had been done for the last 15 years that way, Brian, please correct me if I'm wrong, it was a bit of a lesser concern to him to have it done that way. Because we are able to historically show that's how we've always done it.
That and the, the fact that the existing board has made a commitment over the last several years that every warrant is mailed to every household. So everybody has time with the document, they don't have to seek it out, it's, it's brought to them. I don't know, shy of sitting with them and reading it to them, there's, there's a few other steps I think the town could reasonably take to make sure that every resident had the opportunity to be informed. At that stage, you're coming down to scheduling conflicts and truly voter interest. And those are things that the day of the year has little impact on. So I think from that standpoint, the select board felt if, as, if we've given as much due notice to the residents and have literally provided them with a printed copy in their hands in places, as you noted, to get it electronically if they needed it, that that's about all a town can do to duly warn and attempt to engage. But I, I do think just to be clear to what you just said, Deb, none of these requests that the select board's recommending or the things that you've been working on with Mariah for the last year, none of these are meant to drive a project in town. The, the reality is, we think that there's some common sense steps that the town can take to address some, some constraints or some, some other limitations within our zoning to hopefully create opportunity throughout town. There's no interest in trying to get one project through and alter the zoning, as you noted, and then quickly present a change to put a restriction back in place. And I know that when this conversation came up, and I know that, that Mike, you've expressed a concern about the discretion or the, the pressure on the planning board. The way it was presented from the, the select board, and Jake can correct me if I'm misspeaking, was that there's a trust in the planning board to do the special permit process in a manner that is, is responsible and ethical and obviously comports with law. And that they trusted the discretion of the planning board to see that process through. And, and so they didn't feel like they needed to give you a cap to work under because they trusted you all to do that. So, so it definitely was not to put additional pressure on you, it was to say they deferred to your, your knowledge on this and your, your decision making. Am I misconstruing that, Jake?
No, that's accurate and we we believe that it does need review and, and at least in my opinion, obviously I'm speaking mostly on my behalf and what the board has already said out in public, I'm not presuming to know, you know, every detail that each of the board members feels, but generally that we felt it's something that does deserve review when it's larger, hence it should be special permit as opposed to by right in any zone that, that we, or district that we put it in. And if, to what you said earlier, Mike, the planning board feels that it should be in another district or zone, then that's definitely for, for you to propose as the planning board. That's, that's why we deferred to your expertise, asked, asked the question, asked for the, to consider this. But didn't assume to know the the best solution and the two projects that I mentioned brought the the restriction and maybe the limit to light, but I know for many years that conversation has been had that the zoning is very specific, that it can only be three to four units in a multifamily and things like that. That is not something new. And I'm sure it had a purpose, but we also understand that we have 0% affordable housing and we have a lot of, you know, there's, there's literally no property or housing available most times of the year in Irving. And so it limits the ability for the town to grow and we need to I, I at least believe as a board member that we need to be looking at how do we continue to grow and develop and keep Irving relevant and engaged and keep people engaged in it, because otherwise, you know, our tax base and everything else will continue to dwindle and that's not good for the overall town's health.
And I agree, Mike, we need strong bylaws. I also don't think we still have to do our jobs. So I mean, whether that's going to put pressure on us or not, that kind of comes with the territory. So I mean, I totally agree, I want to see bylaws that are written well and bylaws that are written that benefit our community, but I'm also not afraid to dig in and do the work if we have to. You know, that's where we can hire, in fact, it was one of the things discussed during the 40B seminar about getting your consultants and getting those outside people that are coming in to help you with a project onboard as quickly as you can once the application has been received. So it does help take some of the burden off the boards that are working on those projects. You know, so I don't think we can be afraid of doing our jobs as the board.
Anybody else have anything?
Agree with Deb because I mean, it's like basically, we just opened up a can of worms right here, so to speak, that now we're looking at a bigger picture because of these two buildings. And you know, it's, it's a tough decision and, you know, Jake, you may, I don't know, to me, it's just really hard because, you know, we live out in the country and I understand, you know, we need affordable housing. It's a lot to take in right now.
It is. Is there, I, I don't know, I mean, I, I looked at Shelburne, I didn't look at other towns, but I'd like to maybe look at a couple others and see if what they have for limits. I thought they addressed it pretty well here, but at least it would be a way out to use the two buildings you want to do and
May, maybe I should just clarify a little bit. These brought up the, the question and raised concern about what's there now for, for the board or consideration to ask the question. We're not looking for zoning that just fits two buildings. If we want to get around zoning for two buildings, we'll do a 40B process and let it a developer come in and avoid it all. I mean, that's just to be frank, that's, that's my opinion, we can do that. So I, I just want to be clear that while those brought, those drove us to consider and review what's in here. By no means are we expecting whatever decision the planning board makes to be specific or relative to two buildings. We're looking as the select board for the planning board to review how those definitions and the permit table affects the ability of the variety of parcels and existing or potential building lots. And, and what someone could or could not do with those. You know, your point about French King was a good one. I mean, there's already a, it might not be considered, it's not residential, but there's already a multi-unit facility in that zone and so, you know, and I understand, I guess, what you're saying about this. It doesn't have a cap, so I don't know how it met that concern you had. And I guess it doesn't allow anything between five and eight units as I read it, which seems kind of odd, no matter where it is. And it almost seems to encourage someone to create something commercial, industrial, and then change it later if they don't like the zoning in that area, which
That would be from prior to 1950. The building historic in this case.
Oh, that's not separate, I can't tell in this language, so that's historic, industrial, or historic, commercial, it's not just any one of the three?
Right. No, it says historic, industrial, or commercial structures. So I, that's how I took it, was it was something before 1950? Either a commercial or an industrial structure. Probably like a department store or a factory.
Does the To find the definition of historic because
It's further down in here, down, if you go down to the bottom.
Also, they have their own definition, got it.
Is there one per commercial structure, Mariah?
I think Brian, you were getting at what I saw, which was, I'm sorry, the historic was a prefix on industrial, not necessarily on commercial, so.
Right.
Well, right. Grolling, I kind of have a technical question, so we're, you know, just to throw it out there, the IP mill has structures that were built post 1950. So I would say like, I believe that whole front addition is post 1950. So how does something like that get handled?
Interesting question.
The be, well, that, I thought that was being taken off the building, but the front part.
Sorry, Brian, I interrupted you.
I was just saying, we assume that, but we don't know.
Oh, I was gonna say, I, my assumption is that it would be based off of the, like predominant structure. I don't know what language would be put in around that, but if the main building is pre-1950, but there's accessory buildings or additions that are post 1950, that would, it would probably be the whole structure, but you would want at least a portion of it to have been from pre-1950.
So I, I appreciate Jake, you being on here, but I think what Brian was saying, how many public, we, we're going to have to bring this to public hearing again, your revision and we don't want to drag it out forever, so. Is that, Brian, the process we should go through, right, to try to get where we want to be?
So I think, so there's, there's two pieces to this, you, you had a public hearing in December and at this point you all as a board decided to table providing feedback to the select board, so I, I don't know what you all will choose to do in terms of closing out that last public hearing process. Proactively, the select board has already submitted a revised request, which you have in front of you, and that was based on what they heard from what was discussed at the planning board meeting, and then subsequently what was discussed at their January 3 meeting. So, so yes, they're basically asking you to consider having another public hearing on this request, but they still haven't gotten the planning board's feedback from the first time officially. And so, and it sounds like you all are having a, a healthy debate on, on this request. So I don't know if, if in any of these cases, you're prepared to offer the select board guidance from your perspectives.
I just offer some context to that as well. My understanding is that the, the public here happened for the changes proposed by the select board. The select board could now choose to move that to a town meeting, they've done their due diligence, they could do that, but they've come back with a second request. The report from the planning board is a request from the select board. It's an option for the planning board, and I think that the, the select board, my understanding is that they would prefer to have feedback from the planning board, since they are the ones that held the public hearing, it's not a requirement. But that this new request would still be subject to, I believe it's a 60-day rule of having a public hearing within 60 days. The select board might be amenable if they get another, if they get a report with feedback saying, you know, we suggest this instead, maybe they would put out a new request and retract this one. But I just want to be clear, the planning board is not picking whether they hold a public hearing.
To add to what you're saying, Mariah, I think the only piece in this sort of speaks to what I was trying to say earlier. We just want to make sure that we're not holding so many public hearings on variations of the same topic that our voters are, are feeling sort of exacerbated by all of this communication, all of these nuanced changes and now they're so disengaged in the process that when they come to town, town meeting, they're not sure what they're voting on. So if the planning board is going to offer feedback, I would maybe encourage you all to do that before a public hearing is scheduled, so that if there is a revision to be considered by the select board, that they submit that back to timely. Yeah.
And I'm, I'm not sure how to get that done, Brian. I, I mean, I'll, I'd like to do it tonight if we can, but I don't think we're going to reach consensus on.
Does it come down to something as easy as thinking about, do we want development to occur? How easy do we want development to occur? You know, how easy do we want it to make it so that development is occurring or can occur, right? Do we want that old school building to be used, redeveloped? Do we want the international paper company to be, you know, taken and redeveloped, right? I mean, how many barriers do we want to put up versus not too many barriers, you know, given that, of course, we're gonna have to make sure that whoever does look at them, you know, they are soundproof and all that stuff with finance and, and, you know, go through the process, right? I mean, that's what it sounds like to me.
I agree, Sonny, it's that, and it's also how much control do we want to have over the process? I, I guess my question, Mike, would be for you is you said that you would be you said that you would be amenable to the Shelburne, the 2.15, but as Jake pointed out, that doesn't have a cap. So I guess I would ask, why are you in favor of doing it in that specific way with no cap versus allowing new building, a new construction with a cap?
Like I said, I think a six-unit new building would probably fit in okay. Anything bigger than that doesn't, I don't think fits in with Irving. That's my opinion.
Not to be picky, but that wasn't really my question. I'm asking why you're okay with Shelburne's 2.15 not having a cap?
Because it's taking an existing historic building and converting it to units, not take, bringing, building a new unit, a barracks style unit like they did in Sunderland.
So aesthetically, it wouldn't look nice if they put in a 20-unit building in Village Central, right? But I don't think that, I don't think that that would go through, though, you know?
Well, I mean, with the special
I mean, it could, maybe if you think that that would look nice. I mean, you want to make it look aesthetically pleasing, right, and that would fit in that neighborhood? And then there's all the residents that live there, too, who will also voice their opinions about it, right, because you have to have a public hearing about it and things, yes? So there are other, there are other, you know, through these processes, I think that at any point it can go through or whatnot, right?
Right, because we would have the special permit process, so we would be in control. It's like, I don't know if you guys remember with the marijuana bylaw. At what point, at one point, the bylaw said something about, I think it was a six-foot taller and eight-foot tall chain link fence, and we all went, oh, that sounds so ugly. So we actually adjusted it to be, we gave the option to have shrubbery plantings and things like that for screenings. Instead, because we didn't want that, you know, big ugly chain link fence. And so we would have that control during the special permit process. And I guess to me, I don't personally see the difference of having no cap if they're reusing a building versus having a cap if they're building something new. I think, to me, personally, to me, I don't, I just don't get the logic behind that, that they could take something like an existing mill building in town and build 300 units if they wanted to. But we wouldn't let them come in and build something new that they could make look to our standards at 300 units. So I guess I'm struggling with trying to understand how that makes sense.
I'm trying to not, I was on the planning board when the Dunkin' Donuts went in, and it was a very tough special permitting process, and I don't want to put you guys through that for a 20-unit building somewhere.
And I appreciate that, Mike. I came onto this board during a very contentious process. So I get that, but I also know that that's the job we all sign up for. And we don't know what's going to be contentious. I can go to town meeting and I can think, you know, this article is going to pass, no problem. And I'll think another article is going to be, quite frankly, I thought we were going to get a lot of resistance with the marijuana bylaw. And I was shocked at how easily that passed, you know, nobody batted an eyelash. Yes, woo-hoo, let's do it. And I've seen conversation take 35, 40 minutes over raising dog licenses, or, you know, kind of something that someone would look at and go, oh, yeah, this totally makes sense. And there is, you know, and people are upset about that. So I think we can do our best to try and gauge what's going to be tough, but in reality, we just don't know.
I'd also like to just remind everybody that you're considering doing special permitting for the, for the multi-unit housing. So you would still be looking at special permits, no matter what your cap is or isn't, or if there isn't one. Unless you change that to being by right.
No, I'm not saying that, but that's, I realize it's still special permit. But it'd be a lot easier if it was six units than 20 units, trying to for me, anyhow, if I was, I, like I said, I don't think a 20-unit building is going to fit into Central Village or Village Residential or French King very, very well.
I guess I would counter, Mike, with, there's already buildings like that there. I mean, there's two hotels in Central Village. Oh, I'm sorry, one in Central and one in French King. I mean, those are larger units. You know, those are weatherheads is, I don't know the exact count, looking at it, I would guess it's probably more than 20 units. You know, so I guess they don't, and to me, Central Village is where we would want that kind of development, because that doesn't put it in our neighborhoods. I mean, I personally am against having something like this in rural residential. Personally, I feel it should be a no across the board. People who live in rural residential bought big lots so that they had that sense of I don't have neighbors, I have this nice, beautiful space to myself that I can enjoy. But I think there are places for it in our, in the other three zones, and I think it's not, it's not like everybody and their brother is going to be able to just say, oh, woo-hoo, I've got a half acre land, I'm throwing up 20 units. I mean, there's still a ton of other restrictions that they would have to go through. And I would bet, in a lot of our districts, we actually probably don't have that many lots that would actually accommodate this type of building. So I almost tend to wonder if we're, as my mom would say, are we borrowing trouble? Are we thinking about things that actually can't happen? Because we just don't have the lot sizing and things like that, that, to allow it.
Like Mariah always says, you can tear down a building and build something else on a lot, too, so.
But only if it conforms to the zoning. I can't tear down my house and put a 50, and put even probably a 10-unit development here. Even if I tore down my house, because I don't meet the zoning requirements. I would, I would bet money on that, that my property would not accommodate that. So.
No, others, my, I don't know. Anyhow, that's, that's my concern. You've, you've stated your, you know, what you you think.
Mike, may I offer one additional comment?
Yeah.
I think kind of to what you brought up, Sonhee, I just want to put out there that another area that brought this topic forward for the select board is the 40B process, and I wasn't here for the earlier part of your meeting, so maybe you already discussed that potential. However, having at least a special permit in place would allow the planning board some oversight in what happens and may allow an avenue for a developer to go rather than potentially trying to exercise a 40B where we would have no say. And so we did want to look at ways that we could modernize our zoning that would encourage cooperation with developers and lessen the, the potential that someone may decide to go a 40B process, because there are probably some properties that could support larger housing, and they could bypass the zoning by going that route, that are privately held, not just town properties. Which was some of the input that we had at one of our last meetings, you know, the concerns about that, and I know some have brought that up as kind of a, you know, is the, is the board fear mongering or something of that nature by bringing that topic up? And, and I disagree adamantly. I think we all should be aware of the risks and make conscious decisions about whether or not we are enacting bylaws and regulations that allow us to try to have as much input and contribution to any changes that are happening in the town as we can. And if we aren't at least aware of those types of things and try to incorporate those potentials into decisions we make, then, you know, it's like years ago when the public utility deregulated and they were considering sending all of the revenues from first light, you know, the hydro facility, back to the state level or other places, and, you know, a lot of the towns around, especially here, spent a ton of effort to ensure that that money stayed in Irving. And that could happen again. It's always a potential, you know, just like people talk about the hydro could close. A lot of things are going to change, it's going to be bad news, it could happen. We don't ignore that it's a possibility just because it's but, you know, it's going to be a monumental situation if it does. And I don't I don't envy some of those more difficult processes, and the boards had many of those topics, like, you know, you mentioned about Dunkin' Donuts. There's been the gas station, there's been senior, senior and community center, there's been so many over the years, even in the short time that we've lived here compared to some others. But I believe that that's what we were all elected to serve the citizens by doing, is taking on those tough topics and ensuring that we try to provide, you know, insight and oversight and guidance when those things are going to happen or trying to happen to ensure that they kind of fit the long-term view of what the town wants to be. And that's what we're tasked with. Thank you.
Okay, so for tonight, is there anything that you want us to say, Jacob, that you want to bring back to the select board? Like, are we supposed to approve something or say we're still thinking about it or something?
I think the, I think what the board is waiting on and hoping to hear, and I'll tell you what you all should do, that's for you to decide what you, you know, as a, as a majority feels the best choice, is to respond to the select board with either another recommendation or what you feel should or shouldn't be changed. And, you know, from, no, we don't agree with changing anything, we're fine with the way it is, all the way to, you know, we want it in all zones and we want it by right, you know, and I'm just being dramatic on either end of the scale, but whatever the planning board may decide, but I think what we'd like to hear is a recommendation from the planning board on what they feel a change should be or that no change should be. And then we can take action because we've gotten that feedback. We narrowed our kind of what we proposed because of what we heard for public feedback, but we haven't heard anything yet officially from the planning board on what we should do.
Okay, thanks. Mike would think.
Well, we can, we can take a vote if, if you want on adding the French King and, and take it. Let's, I'll make a motion to recommend we include the French King in, in the special permit process. All in favor? Can, you want to say if you're in favor or not for that?
Mike, you need a second before you call that vote.
Second. Can someone second it?
I'll second it, but I'm also going to say I'm not clear on what this vote is for, so I would like a better explanation.
To include the French King Commercial District in the select board, they, they took it, they just included the Central Village and Village Residential and excluded French King Commercial. So include that in the
Their request is only, their new request is only for Village Residential. Mariah, just put it up on the screen for us.
It's to add it in VR because it already exists in CV.
Okay.
If I'm, if I'm hearing Mike correctly, I think he's saying that he would like it to be, he would like to recommend that VR and the French King District be changed to special permit.
Correct.
Thanks for the clarification, Mariah.
You're welcome.
Any seconds?
I seconded.
All in favor?
Seconds. Sonhee, I. So you're saying, can I just read this back? Make, makes the motion to make the French King District and the VR part of the special permit process?
For multi-unit developments, yeah.
For multi-unit developments?
Yeah.
Can you not?
Could I, could I suggest a friendly amendment? You're, I believe your motion is to make the recommendation that the the select board add that back into their request. Is that correct?
Correct. And then I guess this is a take a, I make a motion to take a vote on no cap on the number of units for the multi-unit for each of the three sections.
Hold on, can we, can we start that? Can we have Sonhee read back the motion? Because I don't, I didn't hear Janice's vote and I didn't vote. And so I think we're getting a little ahead, so.
Let me redo that. Um, let me re-say that also. Mike makes the motion and Mariah, you said to no, no, it's late, so my brain's like swimming, sorry. Mike makes the motion to make the French King District and VR part of the special permit process for multi-unit multi-unit developments.
I think you want it to be multi-unit dwellings.
Multi-unit dwellings.
Dwellings, and I think in the beginning, you want to say Mike makes a motion to something along the like, include in the report back to the select board. Mike, you can put it in your own words, but this is not a motion to change the zoning, it's a motion to ask the select board to add this back in through your report.
Sorry, Mariah, I, my kids were roughhousing over there, and I totally didn't hear what you said. And I'm like, I can't be there because I'm having a meeting. I'll be tasking. Mike makes the motion to, makes the motion to include, sorry.
Feedback to, this is feedback to the select board.
Mike makes the motion. Mike makes the motion to to give, to give feedback, to give feedback. Back back to the select board to to add the French King District, the French King District and VR. Hold on one second, let me try to redo this. Motion to makes the motion to give back to give, makes motion to get feedback to select board to approve to change, to change BR and King District. To change, we are in District. In District to special permit.
Multi-unit dwellings. Is that correct, dwellings, Mariah?
Yeah, I think that's how you want to phrase it.
Okay, so let's see. Mike makes the motion to give feedback to the select board to change VR and the French King District to special permit for multi-unit dwelling. Does that sound good?
Yes.
Is that right? Yes. Does that sound right? Okay, and Deb seconds?
Yep.
Okay, and I say, Sonhee, I. You want a roll call?
Yeah, Mike Schaefer, I. Yeah, Mike Schaefer, I.
Deb, I.
Okay.
And then the second. Feedback, I'd like to make a motion to, for the second feedback to the select board. Regarding no cap on the number of units. As, as submitted, I guess. And do we get a second?
I'll second.
So this would be to go along with removing any cap on the number of units. In each district. All in favor?
Sunhee, I. Sunhee, I.
Deb, I.
And I'm going to abstain, but it passes with majority. You still here Jake or?
Yes, I am.
All right, so that, that would be the feedback from the planning board.
Okay, the select board is. Meeting again on the seventh, so we'll. Make sure it's on the agenda for the seventh and discuss. The feedback then and. If we, if the select board decides to. Incorporate the recommendations, then we'll, you know, we'll send that back and the. I don't know exactly when the clock would start on the 60 days for the public hearing, if it's from the. Regional memo or the revised, if we revise it, but. But then that clock will start for, for the planning board to hold the public hearing on, on the changes.
Okay, thank you, thanks for joining us.
Yeah. Once, I would just add, once we've provided the feedback, you know, you'll get that probably on the eighth. If you're able to hold, Brian, can you help me with the timeline? If they're able to schedule and plan a. A hearing in time for us to actually include it in the special time meeting or is that going to push our March timeline? If we wanted to get it on there.
Let's see. Yeah, it's going to push your timeline. Because we were hoping to close the STM, I think on the seventh. So that you could schedule a date and we could get ready to send it to the residents.
Right, right, okay.
Yeah, so maybe too tight.
Okay, all right, I was going to say, but either way, even if it's for the annual, just, you know, as soon as you can get a hearing and. Schedule would be great to keep, to keep it moving.
Thank you. While you all were meeting, I, I just sent out the call to all of you for the annual town meeting warrant articles, so. We can move these items over to the annual town meeting warrant.
Okay, excellent, yeah, so I appreciate the feedback, we'll, we'll, the board will review on their next meeting and get your response and then. You know, as soon as you can get a hearing scheduled, that would be great, so we can get it on to the annual.
Okay. Thank you, now back to the agenda, we're not very far along and we're two hour, over two hours into the meeting. All right, this was the code modification, that's something. I believe you wanted to try to get done prior to the annual meeting, is that right, Brian or?
Sorry, I just realized I was muted, this project's been on hold for a while and I think the, the town clerk realizes we don't have enough time to get this done for annual town meeting. So what he's hoping you will all do is review the feedback that General Code, the vendor gave you. I know, I think you've reviewed the first 16 items and I think there was maybe 30 in total for the zoning bylaw. And come up with the recommendations on how you would respond, either no action or some action. And if you're going to take action, obviously all of those items, and there, Mariah's got a list. If any of the items require even punctuation changes, things like that. We would definitely need to have a public hearing held, otherwise Dick can't. Work with the vendor to get the draft ready to go. So, so I guess what I would say is the sooner the planning board could review this and schedule a plan, a public hearing on what you want to present to the voters for changes. The sooner Dick can get that feedback incorporated into the vendor's feedback and they can do their part, so we're. Your part is the hardest one because you have to do public hearings.
Just, just to recap this for Janice and. Sunhee. This is really more to help be able to search our records and. Right now, the way the bylaws are set up, they're not searchable by any computer, so they want to renumber it so that. Things make computer sense and we don't really need to change anything if we don't want to, just the numbering.
Correct.
But they had. They had hired a consultant and they went through and found some discrepancies with the. Massachusetts law and. A lot of grammatical issues, so.
Correct.
I would. I mean, if we want to get this done quick, there's like four options, we can say, change it the way they suggest. Change it the way we, we think it should be changed, or we can say do nothing. Or we can wait until after. We made the code number change and then go back and readdress it.
Right.
So to get it done quickly, ones that are difficult, we could just say we're gonna, I know Deb. You may not like that going back again to them, but. There's a few that we're never going to get through, like the signage one, the solar one. There's, you know, we, we've got changes we want to make to those sections. But we don't have time to go through them and, and. If each one of those is going to take. Quite a few meetings to get through. So I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to just say, Mike, to what you're saying as a, as a suggestion, it may make sense for you all to consider. Just adopting the chapter and sections that they're proposing to you. Present that at a public hearing, that would allow Dick and the vendor to roll this all into a presentation of a bylaw. The, the chapters and sections allow this to become a code. So the zoning bylaw would have that specific structure. And then maybe there's a couple of simple things like select board is no longer a border, border selectmen, so if there's any references to the border selectmen, make those simple changes. And leave that alone for now and specifically because you all have $60,000 to hire an attorney to help you work on this project. And you can do a full review of your zoning and update these sections in a way that makes sense with your own consultant. That may be your time to really delve into these sections that you want to have more extensive work done. And they will help you, General Code, when you go to present your, your articles going forward, will help you set up a proposed chapter and section for all of it. So when it's adopted at town meeting, it just inserts right into the code like it's supposed to. So, so I think your suggestion may make sense if you just could focus on the structure piece and the really simple, low-hanging fruit pieces of this. And maybe leave the more complex things for you and your consultant to work on afterwards, that may make sense.
Have probably, Janice, you haven't seen this, but Mariah sent it out again to us. Couple of last week, I believe, so. It's, it's pretty boring legal stuff to go through, but that's all I can tell you, but. We, maybe for the next meeting. You guys can look through. Well, actually, I, I kind of like that idea if. It's, is make the number changes and then. And any slight grammatical changes and, and save the rest for later. Does that make sense to people? Yeah.
Okay, so we can work with you on all of that to get that ready for a future public hearing of yours.
Yeah, do we need to do that for, have that proposed for next meeting then, is that something you could have ready? Take what we've done already, I've looked at the rest of it, I can work with somebody. To go through 16 through 20. Or 16 through the rest, if, if that's. I don't know what's acceptable to people. But I, I, I would make, I would only make all. Changes, grammatical changes, not, not any major changes anywhere.
I, so I guess the only question I have to help guide you all is, is. Mariah, from your understanding of the process, does this need to? Go through that process where something gets sent to the select board, they send it back? To trigger the hearing?
Yes, and I think we would need to have very clear guidance on what that is, we would need that document from General Code to be filled out with. Whatever the planning board is choosing to move forward with.
So, so what you have on the screen in front of you is where you all left off in, in October. When you were going through, and so these are all the things that you all agreed to back then that you were going to propose. So if you want that feedback to be sent to the select board, the chapter and section structure and these revisions, one through 15. We can send that to the select board and have them send it back to you for, to, to officially start that public hearing process. And that would allow you to, when you schedule it, present it to the public and at least get this part done.
At least that, would that, could we do the whole thing that way, Brian, or would that just be one through 15, that's where I'm getting confused.
I think, I would say you've only done one through 15 so far as a group, so you've already made those decisions that you were recommending, if you want to do the rest of them, that's fine too. But the, the four of you need time and as you noted, it's already, it's already after nine, so I don't assume you're doing that tonight.
Okay, why don't we, I make a motion to, as Brian just said. Number one was. I. Though we didn't put anything down on that, so I wonder if we should just write defer decision until after code publication.
Okay.
And that could be for 16 through 20 or.
Yep.
To the, through the end of it too. 39, I think, there's 39.
So I went through it, a lot of it is, in the end too, there's a lot of that's just grammatical. So I would rather see us tackle the last half, at least the grammatical stuff, so we could present it. At one public hearing, so we could just do all the grammatical changes one time.
Okay, that's all right, so when are we going to do that, our next planning board meeting, we'll go through. The back half of it.
So would that be it, just to focus on that, because it's going to take a while probably, it usually does.
How long did it take, I'll do the ones that are there right now, the one through 15.
How long did it take, it took us probably an hour to get through those, I would guess.
Yeah.
If I can make a recommendation, I think if you all go through. Prior to the meeting, you know what your decisions are, I think you'll be able to move through them pretty quickly.
Yeah.
And then sort of tangent to all of this, and I'm like, you brought this up, you all had done some other work, I think on the introduction to your bylaws, maybe section one.
Yeah, that, Janice, that was the closest thing we have to a purpose and objective. Was our introduction and we rewrote that a year ago and.
You all voted to, to support those changes, correct?
Yes.
So that may be one more thing that if you've already done that work and you're ready to have that go to a public hearing, maybe include that in your. Request to the select board so that they can send it back to you with any feedback and then trigger your public hearing, so, so that work that you've all done can finally move forward.
So we, are we submitting one through 15 to the select board now, tonight, or is that what we need to?
Sounds like you're waiting.
Waiting until we do the whole thing next meeting?
I think that's what you all just discussed.
Yeah, I think that's what I'm hearing is to wait until the next meeting to do the rest of it and then. With the whole thing.
And then the introduction that we rewrote, we could send to the select board with this next meeting, is that what we're thinking?
Yeah.
All right, all right.
Thank you all for your work.
So for next meeting, people should go through the rest of these and if, at least the grammatical changes. Okay, putt and zoning map update. That. How are we doing on that, what, is that going to the?
That's. That's already scheduled currently to be on the special time meeting warrant.
Okay, great. And when do we think that's going to be?
As of right now, they're looking at a March date.
Okay. And. The use table modifications, that, that one, we should try to get ready for annual town meeting.
Based on what you just discussed with Jake, because you all need to hold another public hearing on the revisions you're all discussing, I think. It wouldn't be in time for the March town meeting at this point, so it, annual would be the next chance.
Okay. And I, I'm sorry to keep, this meeting's going late, but update on a new planning board member, I think Melanie Burnett submitted a letter of interest. Is it, Ryan, I, I don't have that.
I think you all need to have a meeting with the select board to consider the appointment, we just need to do a quick joint meeting. We have, I think I sent you the letter of interest, Mike, and, and I sent it to Jake as well. So I just need you and Jake to schedule your joint meeting and if we can get a majority of the planning board and the select board together, we can quickly. Take a vote, have the two boards take a vote on an appointment. It would be an appointment through the balance of the year, which ends on May 2. And assuming you appointed that individual, they would have to seek reelection at that point. Or the seat would be vacant again, beginning on May 2, so we probably want to do it sooner than later.
Brian, would it be possible for the rest of the board to read her letter of interest?
Of course, yeah, I, I, Mike, I don't know, if you want to send it out to the board members or if you want me to send it, I can, I can do that.
Yeah, would you send it, I, I, I tried to find it and I couldn't find it before the meetings, so.
Yep, I'd be happy to send it out to all of you, of course.
Brian, could I get that sent to my Gmail, I still can't get into the Irving email.
Okay, yep, I'll send it there and Jackie and I would be happy to help you get back into your email.
That would be great, I, I got in like a handful of times, but for some reason I just, it keeps saying, it keeps sending me that code and I try it like 10 times and then it locks me out, you know?
Okay, yeah, maybe you and I can set up a time and we can go over it and work on, get it figured out.
Sounds good, thanks.
Of course.
Okay, the next one, Brian, I guess we, maybe if you could put it off to the next meeting, but you sent out a tremendous amount of information. On. Housing production plans and. I, it was really good, but I don't think we have time to go through it tonight, do we?
I agree, I'd be happy to come back at another meeting.
All right, maybe put that on the next meeting. Any other topics not anticipated?
I think you skipped over the zoning consultant.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, how are we? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, how are we doing with that?
So.
Sorry, I was, I was gonna say, Mariah and I need some guidance from you all, but your contract is signed, so we can finally move forward.
So I sent out an email before the meeting. I need guidance on whether you want to put out a request for proposals from zoning consultants. And then review those proposals and select a zoning consultant that way, or if you would like to. You can just select a lawyer who has experience in zoning law and move forward with them. I got a scope of work from. One lawyer, he also gave me some references, so if you'd like to. Call his references and find out, you know, you have, pick a person to call his references and find out if he's someone you'd like to work with or. Find another zoning lawyer or several other zoning lawyers to reach out to, you, you could do that. But those are kind of your two main options, is either put out a procurement for any zoning consultant to respond to, or lawyers are. They don't have to go through the request for proposal process, so you could just pick a lawyer to work with.
How important is it that they're a local and can come in and meet with us or?
I mean, you can, you guys are having online meetings now, so, you know, they could really be anywhere in the state.
But I think to, to the general question, you want somebody who specializes in Massachusetts zoning laws, because they can be very different in different states. So you, and if you're going to work with a lawyer, obviously, they should be certified to practice law in the state of Massachusetts. But I think that scope of work that Mariah was saying that she could send out to all of you is, is where you really want to spend. Your effort, whether you do a procurement and go for any type of zoning professional, or if you want a lawyer, the scope of work is what we're gonna. Attach to whatever contract you come up with, that's going to be their schedule A, so. We want to make sure that that scope of work gives you the deliverables by whatever date you want them by, how detailed, if there's a number of meetings you want them to attend with you. That's, that's really where we want to spend our effort to make sure that you get your full benefit for the amount of money that you're going to spend.
And how much are we paying this zoning consultant again?
A grant for $60,000.
It's a, it's a grant for 60,000, okay.
You don't have to spend it all, but that's your, that's how much you can spend.
Per year?
Or it's a one-time grant.
One-time grant, okay, thank you.
This is to review all of your zoning bylaws, and the way that it would work is you would meet with the consultant. They, you know, you would explain what your goals are, talk about how you want to achieve those goals, give them guidance on how to move forward, they would go. Work on drafting the changes, kind of similar to what you're looking at with the recodification, where they would show you. What the existing text is and what they're proposing the change would be, and then you would all go through those changes. And say yes or no, like you're doing with the recodification, so yes, we'd like to make this change, no, we wouldn't. And then you would hold, hold your public hearing, and then you would bring those changes to town meeting. So you would all pick anything you do or don't want to change, the consultant is just offering advice on. What you might want to change based off of, you know, case law, or what they've seen in other communities, or things that they know are outdated, stuff like that.
Okay, thanks, Mariah, I haven't, I can make, I can call some of the references for the one you gave us. If, if that's alright with people.
I can send those over to you.
Yeah, and the scope, we can talk about the scope at the next meeting, if people can look at. You, you sent out a, some scope information to Mariah.
Yeah, I sent out a copy of a scope. So, you know, obviously we'd fill in Irving and you could change any objectives you want, but it's an idea.
Okay. Alright, well, look, look those over before the next meeting. Anything else? A lot to cover, I know. Alright, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting, it's 9:23.
A second. Oh, sorry, Deb, did you want a second?
No, you can.
Okay, a second.
All in favor?
I.
Hi.
Janice.
Alright, thank you very much, see, see you guys February 17th. And I'll try to get some work done before that with the references.
Thank you all.
Thank you, good night.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.